Okay, starting our first meeting at six oh five. So, starting with roll call, we're just stating first and last names, Lauren Bachman.
John Evans, Aaron McConnell.
Yeah, I'm missing quite a few.
Jesse Roper. Teresa Wakefield, Jordan Jones.
And Robert.
Robert Sausen.
Okay, we do not have any public here tonight for on non-agenda items. So, moving on, consideration of minutes because we do not have a full quorum, we cannot vote to approve the minute, so we will table those until our following meeting. Moving on to board review and action items, an update on the WCP memorials.
Yep, so, a couple of days after our last meeting, I met town staff engineer who did the first CAD drawing for the WCP memorial. And we went out there and just kind of talked through a bunch of different things that would be potential holdups or things that we could potentially do in the process until we're fully ready to to get onsite and start moving. One of the major things was getting it flagged for insurance that where the footprint is and was is up to date or it is compliant with the new floodplain map. So, we need to get a surveyor out there to make sure. If that's the case, then we would potentially have to do permitting. It was designed, so it was hopefully outside of it. Not everything is perfect on CAD, and when you do the overhead drawings, as we know, like, things can shift as well as the floodplains move from from year to year. So, that would be the next step. He's given me contacts for that. The other concern that was brought up, and we were looking back out towards the dog park. There's probably some settling that has happened on that last bit that comes up from the dog park to the trail in front of where the proposed site is. There's a potential for non-ADA compliance slope there. So, regardless, we need to take care of that to to comply with our parks, so we need to look into that. But from what it looked like, we should just be able to either mudjack or get someone in there to excavate underneath. Just move a couple of those. We might have to knock out a couple of pieces of concrete. It shouldn't be that big of a deal. It's not the whole piece. It's just really the last two coming up. So, what we talked about is worst case, we might have to come back onto the path and move it a little bit to slope down on both sides and then slope back in towards the dog park towards the west. But it looks like, and from preliminary testing, that all we have to do is just kind of change the grade on the last three or two or three. So, we're looking at sixteen twenty-four feet of concrete, which is in the grand scheme of things. Very important for ADA compliance overall, but also to to make sure that people can come from the parking lot where the ADA or from from the street where the ADA parking is all the way to WCP. The other thing is that we will need the compaction test. So, if and when Public Works is going to do the work for putting the soil down and compacting it, we'll have a an engineer come out and test those. All that being said, they're also doing work around the town that needs some surveying and also potentially some compaction stuff. The surveyor works on a day-to-day basis, so if we had him come out, we might be able to negotiate since it's it's like a couple hours worth of work, max. But if we could partner with, I'll hold up for whomever is at the back door.
My kids are over there. They should they should open the door. We'll see.
We could open the partition a little bit more, I guess.
Yeah, the compaction test takes five minutes for location.
Yeah, and I think that's more just like a an onsite core, but I'm, if we can partner it to get them to come out and do multiples, then we might get reduced costs, but it doesn't sound like that's going to be very much. The engineer for the town spoke to the fact that it's, you know, maybe a couple hundred dollars each time, and we'd have to do it throughout the process. So, maybe we would have to do it three times, four times. So, we're looking at max like thousand twelve hundred bucks. So, not a not a ton in the grand scheme. Welcome.
Hi, so Jesse Roper is joining us and Robert Sausen.
Yes, love.
Do we want to turn back since we do have four now, or do I just keep moving forward?
Let's just put it at the end.
Yeah, we can do the consideration at the end, and then we haven't done any action, like complete action items yet.
Yeah. So, I was just letting them know that I spoke with the town engineer who did the first CAD drawing for the WCP memorial. We were onsite. So, there were a couple of things that we were discussing through, one being ADA compliance that we're going to, we'll work through with a little bit of concrete work at the most. The second being, we'll need someone onsite, a surveyor, to come and make sure that we're either in or out of the floodplain, and then depending on where that footprint lies, move forward with permitting and or we're outside of it, so we're good to go. And then compaction testing, which we'll need to do if if Public Works does it because they don't have an engineer to do that specific testing to make sure that piece is compliant. There are a couple of other little things that we might have to work through that we talked about, but a lot of that will come as, you know, once the dirt's on it, and we have a, if we're going to do a contractor, Public Works is going to pour the concrete, all that kind of stuff. So, I'm thinking we move forward with with getting a surveyor out there as soon as possible to survey the land and move forward with that. It's just another step in the right direction that kind of tells us, yeah, we're we're good to go, or no, we need to pivot and and get a floodplain permit to do to do the work or move it north, south. Pinch it in so it's outside of the flood, but whatever we have to do to change, but the next step.
Yeah.
Very cool. That's exciting. And then pass that next step.
Pass that next steps would be continued efforts into, do you have any updates on?
They haven't got it back.
Okay.
It's getting towards the end of the year too, so.
Yeah.
I hope we will here.
And that's that's understandable. We could catch someone at the beginning of next year. If we keep moving forward with it, we do have CAD drawings. We should be able to generate if if we know that we're out of the floodplain, we can actually draw real lines, should be able to generate how much concrete we're going to need, and that generates that first cost. The amenities, I think we've all talked about, like, just starting to piece together what we want to look like. So, I'll work on getting that as part of the next update for the next meeting is like, hey, here's a couple benches that fall within the design standards. We talked about someone looking at flagpoles, just the the very start of the basics, so we can get cost that way. And then hopefully we'll get, the the concrete really is going to be a pretty hefty piece of what we do. And then I will call an electrician, get him onsite to see what it will be to pull power underneath to get it there for any lights we would need for the flags.
And we have one we usually work with.
Yep, he he's the one that had helped design or worked on WCP. He's come out and done bathroom work for me, light work, all that kind of stuff. He's very quick and he knows everything at the park, so. Yeah.
And I think as soon as we start learning numbers for like concrete and that we're in the right area and not in the floodplain, I think that'd be a lot easier reaching out to people and figuring out what we can kind of hope to get grassroots, you know, donations for, to be a lot easier.
Yep.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
And then, like you said, with the flagpoles, because once we get the base done, and we're like concrete flagpoles, then it's like we've already talked, you know, it's interiors, it's different steps.
Yep.
You know.
Concrete flagpoles, benches.
Yeah.
You know, all the landscape stuff, there's, the designs have little bit of turf. We still have to kind of work through whether or not we're going to put the cannon there, but there still is the circle in the design, which no matter what we do with that, if it if it that's where the flower bed is, or if we do the cannon and do flower beds walking in, like, all that can easily go. It's not going to change the design much. Little bit of turf, some irrigation, you know, all that kind of stuff is well within us getting generated cost pretty easily.
And I think with the meeting that Robert, myself, and Teresa went to with the Legion, consensus was that the cannon wasn't really a problem, you know, and so if we decide that that section of Centennial is more important to not have the cannon there because we need the area for something else, I don't think it's a problem. I really don't. I mean, personally, I mean, from what what we saw at the meeting, it really didn't seem to be an issue.
The veterans I've talked to said.
Yeah. Last Friday, there's a Northern Colorado's directors, Parks and Rec directors meeting that I went to in Erie, drove right through their town, and it's got, you know, a gentleman holding a flag statue in the cannon right next to it, and you know, I can understand both views, but you do see a various different things like we've all talked about, like each one's different. It's all unique. They're, you know, none of them's going to be the same if we deem it needed. I can tell you, Main Streets probably would really like the the market to have that space there and to be able to add more booths as we as that grows.
And we're not done with Centennial yet.
No.
I mean, far from. I mean, we still don't have the bigger picture with Centennial.
Right.
Yet, which we hopefully will get with Master Plan and everything else, but I just see, I see footprint. It's Centennial, and it's the farmer's market, it's Oktoberfest, it's it's everything that we do there. Yeah, it's so many things that it's not necessarily in the way, but it'd be nice to have that that whole row open.
In the grand. Yep. Exactly.
That's true.
In the grand scheme of things, it's not an amenity that needs to be there with all the other things going on, especially if we do something like a grandstand and there's open lawn, like, we need space for people to gather, and that's kind of in the way.
Those movie screens.
That's where, that's really where we wanted to go. You know, we've talked with Main Streets, like, it'd be really cool if they did, you know, the market.
Yeah.
And as the market's closing down, the screen's coming up, so that there's it's bringing in people before, and we're working through, we're we're still working through that on the back end. It's definitely not right now in the budget. I know we're getting sidetracked a little, but no, that's okay. But but again, it's not just one thing that we're doing, it's how it affects everything else. And if we only look, if we only look at one piece, we're not looking at the grand scheme of what we're trying to do is bring people together, engagement, having people that can go to the market, enjoy, have their kids hang out at the movie, you know, whatever that is, just like bring excitement to downtown, all that stuff. Cleveland's getting redone, like, we're all part of that. So, every little thing matters.
Good.
Yeah, okay. Well, there's a couple of action items for me, and then anybody that wants to take on all the, like, any of the other little amenities that we could put up there. Teresa had talked about reaching out to other municipalities and just seeing if, one, if we wanted to go, all go look at other memorials, or just like the contacts for them, how they got built, funded, all that stuff. I haven't heard anything yet, but we can reach back out to her and see if she's.
Clacks to represent the different branches.
All that stuff.
That to look, there's different, several different places in town that can make the clacks. So, we could start talking to some of those companies.
Yep. Good idea.
Some samples.
Yes.
Yeah, have them generate ideas if they're if they're into that, see where it leads to. You know, whether or not they're donate or work on it with us, just where those partnerships lie within town.
Yeah.
For the flagpoles and the actual flags, will will the Legion be responsible for rising flag? Like, that's a whole thing, so.
No, because that's why we're going to pull power. If you have a light on the American flag twenty-four seven, it doesn't need to be, it only needs to be lowered when the, where when there's a half mast.
Okay, good.
Call, in in which case we absolutely will do in the Parks Department. If they want to take that over, if they want to, you know, send someone on their behalf to do it.
Volunteering them.
No.
You know, perhaps they wouldn't.
Perhaps they would want to, right.
So, you know, thinking of getting flags itself, it might be worthwhile to reach out to the VA, because they do, they give a lot when it comes to memorials and people passing away and stuff like that. I don't think it's a bad idea. I think really, if we reach out to VA, we might actually be able to acquire all the flags. I do have one, I think I still have one contact with the VA that I could probably reach out to. I'll have to look it up, but if I don't have it, my mom has it.
Okay.
So, I think we could probably get the flags, probably for free. Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah. You have to let Teresa into the meeting. She's trying to get.
Oh. Sorry.
Keep that or not.
Looking up. It should be. I'll see, I'll I'll work on that.
I think there's an office in Fort Collins for the VA, at the court offices. I think so.
Oh, I'll look it up. That's good.
If I can find some time, I'm usually busy Monday through Friday, but if I can find.
Teresa, can you hear us?
I'd reach out.
Okay, yeah, that'd be cool. We've also talked about, I'm seeing other little towns, like, I think Alt had a cute one, uh, for flag retirement, and you can have the bend that had a pit.
On the tower. So, they do it, they do it here in town. I think it's the Boy Scouts do. And they usually do it outside of Sparge, over in that little field to the south of Sparge, by the little disc golf goal they have over there. And they do it every once in a while, but I think you can go into the VA and give any flags that need to be retired.
I just thought the Boy Scouts might want something.
Well, that's a good idea.
While we're doing it.
Yeah.
I I thought it was cool, and I I want to say it's Alt, but I'm not sure. It it was a pit, it was like a concrete round or square.
Have an actual area to do it.
Yeah, and then they could retire the flag in there, and then I I mean, I think it even had like a concrete lid or something.
That's a really good idea. If we had an actual area at the memorial to retire flags, it would be amazing.
That'd be really cool.
I don't even know if it's allowed.
Do you have any contacts with the Eagle Scouts? Remember, they did a little bit of work at the.
They did.
They did the ramp.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, yes, yes. We would just provide this space for them to do, to do it. Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like a good idea, right?
Yeah.
Just a more formal. Yeah.
I mean, I was in the middle, so I didn't catch the whole entire thing. Well, if we had an area at the memorial where they could retire flags, because they, you know, they do a whole ceremony, they burn. But if we had an area at the memorial in WCP, maybe it could be a project for an Eagle Scout where, you know, when they did the ramp, they kind of like fundraised, they they got people involved. The actual troop out of all, maybe we could find somebody who still needs to do a project.
Okay. Yeah, I can reach out to.
If you have a contact.
I do, I do. It goes right up the corner. Name's just looking like a member right now.
I don't know who would be allowed to have a fire in the park if it was ceremonial or not.
The fire department always shows up for the ceremonies.
Okay.
Oh.
They're always on hand.
So.
Every time. I live right there. I've seen them.
Yeah, and I don't know how permitting would work. Maybe we just have to put a permit in to have an event to do that, in which case that come to my desk, and it's in the park anyways. Oh, we work through that. I mean, if we're going to do something like that, it's amazing. That would be really, really cool.
Yeah, it sounds like a really good idea.
Yeah. I just texted the group, uh, Veteran Service Office for, uh, where am I counting? Teresa, you're still muted if you'd like to speak. I think I gave you access.
She said her microphone.
Yeah.
But because she don't. There you go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are we, do you want to move on? Do you want to get into priorities?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Um. Okay, cool. So, we have had a wish list now for the last um, and we called it a wish list. I think we've kind of all discussed, you know, to better say, these are our priorities. These are things that have been presented to our board, either at a meeting or from citizens or from surveys that we've had, or, you know, interactions at different events that that Parks and Rec has had. These are all the ideas that have come up. So, we organized them to in process, right, because we obviously want to address things that, like, we're working on it, or they're in the middle of, you know, installing signs or whatever. Then we have obviously what we are goals for this year, for next year, a two to five-year plan, and then our long term. What is that long term? I don't know. But when we can, it it is a priority. I took a stab at putting things in here. However, you guys see things. No hard feelings here, so I'd like to just see if we can get everything in order and then also see if we're missing any.
I looked it over, and I I like the, I like the layout for one, and then I think the things that fall in twenty twenty-five. I mean, especially looking at that basketball court on the east side, I think that's a real doable thing. And it might not be like a whole court, might be a half court with a basket. I mean, something to give to the kids, I mean, and adults also, also, but I don't see that being a big hurdle to jump. I I think that is a doable thing in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, and something we haven't really discussed too much, when we have this document, it makes me think of, hey, what do we think we can accomplish if we continue to propose to the Board of Trustees, or you guys recommend that we keep that increase in minor park improvements? Like, which one of these can we say this is really a huge priority? Can we just make this a capital project? And you you know, that's where I present that in my capital improvements every year for for twenty-five, twenty-six, right? So, I will also have some things, you know, in that capital budget, like the mower this year, like, operationally, we need that. So, that's where we come together and I say, well, here's a huge priority for me. We can figure all that out, you know, we can't ask for everything. So, we can prioritize this list versus what I'm seeing out in the field for both Parks and Recreation, and kind of come together before this board presents their, you know, ideas to to the Board of Trustees, and then I go ahead and present my budget, which kind of has it all in it.
When is that?
Um, this last year was in October, or maybe the very first, yeah, it was in October, the first presentation was, and the budget process really starts going in August, like, late August, September is when we start turning around ideas, and we kind of, our leadership team gets together, so, you know, something that we can put on that calendar for Fourth of July's past, but now we need to start thinking about the future already, since we're already halfway through the year. So, something to keep in mind.
And you could use the the docs as kind of like a, basically, our stepping stone, you know, we use the docs as we proposed it, they approved it, it's one item. You know, you do it item after year after year.
Yeah.
It all adds up really incredibly fast and.
Yep.
One thing that isn't on the list, because we just recently talked about it last week, but when we went to the parks and we toured a little bit, and you brought up the like, permanent concrete structures for like cornhole and ladders and stuff, I'm I'm really interested in that idea. I would love to see some numbers on that. Because it 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 is, when we went to Wellville, I've been there, I went to the fishing derbies, I I've been there a few times, but I didn't realize how many spaces there are to actually put things in.
Right.
And make it, like you said, like a a meeting area, you know, it's not WCP, WCP's over here on the west side. Maybe that's the congregation point on the east side. You know, I mean, it's a great park, and it has tons of possibilities, but I really like those concrete ideas. And I think it would get people out. You know, like you said, you know, you got family that maybe somebody's fishing, you know, somebody's playing cornhole, there's, you know, a birthday party. There's so many areas to do stuff with there that I would like to see some more numbers on that.
Yeah.
And then possibly put that in our future. I mean, maybe not right away, but
Yeah.
I really like that idea.
Grills over there, like, I want to, what we talked about a little bit was just like making that a a reservable area, but also just like a general space that people would like to come, rather than just a few people fish, they throw their bags down, like, they want to picnic here for a day, right? Because we've got things to play, big open field, potential dog park, you know, water fountain now, all all the things that you need to feel more of a park rather than just the two ponds and then disc golf going around you.
And I think there's been a lot of times that we focus a lot on the west side of the interstate, because that's where we kind of started, and the east side's still relatively new. But I'd really like to put some attention into that park. I think it's a great space to work with.
Yeah.
Having a tunnel there, I think it is so much easy access. Everybody likes to cruise under the tunnel. You're right there.
Yeah.
So easy to get to.
Drainage, showers, everything, nothing other than that.
It's it's always going to be a little dirty. I mean, it's it's made to be an extra drainage for ten, twenty-year floods, stuff like that, and and just how it's built, anything that's coming off the highway, all that dirt is getting caught in those rocks, and then eventually the silt comes down. It's going to be hard to do. But that's not to say we can't keep it clean. One thing I've noticed going through there is like, hey, maybe we need to pop in some LEDs instead of the old bulbs and double the amount of lights that are there, reduce cost overall, right? Because the bulbs are more efficient. I mean, it's going to cost money upfront, making it more lit that that won't take away from it dripping off the ceiling when it rains, like, that's not but just to make it more accessible and safer.
Yeah.
You know, we've we've had internal talks about painting the inside of that with like a mural, which would be really, really cool, like art in public places, which is another thing we want to do with town staff. All want to do that stuff, tons of projects, tons of ideas, but safety, right? Safety accessibility. I would love to get that in and see if we could get some more lighting, and then those big fish mirrors that come out of the tunnel, so when bikers are coming in and out, especially, it's not as needed on the east side, because that's pretty much a straight shot out. But on the west side, there's that pretty harsh turn up towards Rice, where it's like, you know, we're generating more people than bike lanes, so that people are staying in there, like, all that stuff to make sure that we're crossing, seeing, can see in and out.
I know my kids have been on the east side and called me in the middle of the night, because they went to their friend's house, and they're like, can you pick me up? Because I don't want to go through the underpass. Years ago, but I don't blame them.
Yeah.
It does get that way.
We can make it more inviting. It it might not ever be the cleanest tunnel because of just how it, what it's designed to do, how it drains, you know, and I know Public Works is in there pumping out that pit quite frequently. We're down there shoveling, but it's just, sometimes it just stays, you know, and it's hard to get through it as frequently as we need to. Something we can work on operationally, well-lit, makes it safer.
I love the doctor.
It's great, right?
Cleaned everything up in my mind.
Do you have some recommendations on improvements? Is there anything missing, anything that we should take out?
My recommendation, when Laura, she sent this off, and was like, hey, let's talk about it real quick, what what I said is usually what comes from trustee daily is like, we we need to tie this in to comprehensive plan, and then when the new board adopts their new strategic plan. So, just an ability, not necessarily to have another column to to muck it up. I love how clean it is, but maybe on the usable dock that we're all working on or can see, just adding little notes, you know, and and if it's red, that aligns with a certain strategic plan, or if it's green, or I can just even write in little notes as we add things to it and say aligns with gathering spaces, aligns with safety, aligns with ADA, you know, all those things, so that when it comes time to present this, then we have the notes there, but we also know exactly why we're doing it and where it aligns up, so that, you know, our process is streamlined.
So, the the only thing I would like to see is an estimated cost, right? So, somehow, like, maybe the the call or the rows at the top are, you know, significant estimated costs involved. And I know, like, we're trying to prioritize, but it would be helpful to be able to kind of at a glance see that. So, these are large projects, or these are pretty small projects that we can accomplish with, you know, low, low budget.
Um, so what I would say to that, to to keep this more of just like a visual, on the future meeting calendar, there's also the contacts, and there's also another sheet for the projects. And if you go in there and look at the, I think it's the third tab, I've actually added the contacts for the the viewpoint multi-court, and there is a tab in there, so project contacts, and it has the estimated cost from each contact when I get it. So, I love how clean this is, and then we, I, anybody can take this and transfer it into this, and everybody has access to this one. It's just a simple cell sheet. But it's just like all three of the people that have come out, I'm still waiting for, I need to add one of them, but this coatings came out a week and a half ago, so I'm still waiting for a final estimation from that one. But when I will, I'll add the contact, boom. So, if anybody wants all up and ask questions, just say, hey, I'm part of the postboard. We all have access to this. And then just the estimate, so that, you know, when it comes time, then I can pull this up or add it to the packet, just as this sheet, and then we look at the priorities, say, oh, this one's thirty-five, this one's, you know, and it doesn't have to be current projects. Right? We could make future projects on that one. That's just kind of my suggestion to keep this clean.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Are we still working on the splash pad upgrades? Is that still open for this year?
That will be, we'll we'll have to roll roll over some of the CIP money, but as way under what that budget was. It is all but done, the installation is complete, we're getting, except for the new panel. But they're gonna put the new panel in prior to firing up, so they got all of the new chemical um, injectors in. All that stuff is in the splash pad, we're just waiting for the last little piece and that'll be when they train us on the new panel as well as when they train us on how to. Balance the chemicals and it's only chlorine tabs and CO2, so there's no liquid chemicals at all in there. So nice.
Okay.
If you guys want to come see it, more than happy to, it's fun. That was, that's an awesome little swing and a win for us, hundred and hundred and twenty-five thousand budget. Maybe hits forty thousand total, may- maybe forty-five depending on on that.
When are we set to present to the trustees again? Cause I think, I like the goal would be right, like we have this like really tight, everybody's had a chance to throw stuff in. Organized however we need, you know, maybe we're using more um. You know, we're putting which park it is at the beginning or maybe we're color coding a little bit, but whatever it is, I really want to get it edited perfect so that we can start. Questioning it once the trustees, what, when is that?
I would say. With the new board coming on, give them maybe a couple of months, but then you don't want to wait too long, right? Like get it fresh in their mind, it would be my opinion.
I'd like to do it sooner than later, that's for sure.
June would probably be a good idea because. We may have the. But one more, one more meeting and then as we've done in the past, a quick, you know, we'll put together the presentation, then we'll do a special meeting to talk about who's gonna talk, all that kind of stuff. What we really want to push and then uh, and go for it.
And I don't mind talking, I'll go in. I mean, as much as possible, so. Yeah, yeah, I'm good with it.
John's excited.
I am, I really am, that's why I said that I would, I would love to meet with the. You know, the board, now that they're new and fresh and not officially, but. Love to get in there and and invite them to our meetings, I mean, I think it would be. I think it'd be nice to see at least each one of them at at one of our meetings, you know, they don't have to come out at the same time, but. Whenever their schedule works, you know, kind of come and see what we're talking about and this list and things that we've worked on for the last ten years. And what we're knocking off the list and what we hope to get real soon.
And what I would say is just a passion, right? You guys all have a passion, like, when things get moving, it's like, yeah.
So that would be, uh, my idea of ours is June ten, or I'm sorry, June eleven, Tuesday.
Is that okay?
Potentially.
I think, let me look at the, our.
Pencil it.
The the Board of Trustees' future meeting calendar and we pencil it in for June eleventh or. Two weeks after.
Yeah, I'm out looking for that week of the nest.
If we could find a schedule and agenda where they're kind of light on.
Yeah.
Where we can just kind of like, get in there and and really talk and improve a point and then that's like the highlight when they leave, they're like. Park sport came and they brought us this and they're not thinking about. Annexations and all these other things that they're going through, you know, if we can find a light agenda to get into, I think that'd be ideal.
You know, especially the new members, they're gonna have a lot to soak in, so.
We may want to look the week after June eleventh, cause they just put something on pretty heavy for June eleven, last night.
Put something what?
They put, they put the election stuff on to June eleven. So if we want to go a lighter week, the week before, Tuesday, four, Tuesday.
I'm gonna start getting kind of crazy with everybody.
And the fourth of July is always a hard time for.
That would be better.
Well, let me, let me pull up a. Yes, we went over this again today, but I didn't know how extended. Next, next Tuesday at our leadership meeting, I'll just propose and the, you know. Whoever has other things on the agenda will have an idea of how. It would fit in and be received. Uh, I would say the last thing about this is that, um, it'll be. Probably behooves us to do the same thing with pros priorities for parks as well as. Pros priorities for events.
Yes.
Which would key in more on the recreation side of the post and that will just give us. Eh, every year that we can just look at that and say, what what do we do annually? Arbor Day, Fourth of July, every year the dates are gonna change, but we're still gonna do five. Park in place, all those things that we do recreationally and then that's where, you know. Long-term vision for for Gus Mackard, is that in the one year, is that in the two to five? Then we can start working on those things and make them a plan, so that's like the recreation piece and then we bring in Caitlin from Main Streets and see, you know. See how all that wraps in with getting food, all that stuff, right? It's like having that plan up here too, so we've got the parks plan and then the recreation plan and it's. Fairly seamless as far as what we're doing and then what we're presenting or what we're providing.
Do you want me to start that?
If you want to.
Together about kids to parks, right? Cause we always do that, um, we've talked about trying to incorporate Trails Day. Um, it's a national trails day, we just haven't gotten to it, right? You know, so.
Great. Really fun. Did Teresa ever say anything? Sorry, she pulled away, it's still on mute, sorry Teresa.
Or we can hear her.
I added, I've asked her to unmute, which if there's problems on that and.
Oh, she just texted.
You want to give her a call? She can, she can voice in that way.
Do you want to start doing fishing as fun grant?
Yep, Fishing is Fun Grant update. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look through this, but this was the. Final proposed grant to the the. Uh, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, uh, Kelly Hodling and I sat down uh, last week and. Via Zoom and presented to their their panelists, they're like, seven or eight of them. Um, our, our whole proposal, this was an amazing fun. We got some good laughs with this one, Kelly fishing and Billy fishing, just kidding, that's Billy's kid fishing. It's fantastic, they laughed at that, right? I mean, it was in, and this is at, this was at the fishing derby last year, very early. But uh, Kelly did an amazing job putting this together, very well, very well received. We want to be on the map, we we don't have to go through all of it, but you know, she she talked through the townwide goals. And I talked through the technicality of getting it, the the dock in and what it would present as far as, you know, um, the amenities that we're looking for. She just had speaker. Uh, where it's going, concrete, all the stuff, the ADA, um, so all this, all this was presented to them in. In the packet that we put together, but then Kelly can find it for our presentation, which was really amazing. This is the only thing that changed, I don't know, I have that in there, it's actually closer, I think it was twenty-six percent local match. Um, after we recrushed the numbers, there was a little tiny percentage here and off here, but um, that was changed for their presentation. Now, so, I guess what I'll say is that, uh, last Thursday, they contacted us back and said that they wanted to speak. Um, one more time and it was just the grant manager that to- uh, spoke with us. Uh, Kelly and I talked to him yesterday morning. There is no official offer, but it is a conditional that we would be moving forward to the final recommendation. Um, they're, they're very excited about the project, the only thing is, it's very competitive. And their uh, initial um, suggestion is that we just start with one dock and not do two docks. And the main reason is that a lot of the other communities have better. Ability to generate total impact on the community, like they have tickers and trail. Those things, oh, sorry, it's alluding me. Trail markers were when we run over on the counter. Trail counter, that's a very easy, thank you, trail counters, all, all the things that um, would give them very. Quality raw data to why their community needs, they understand the impact of this. But um, our, our generated idea was, you know, parks and staff, myself going out and just saying, eh, generally, there's. Seven to ten kids here throughout the day during the summer, multiplying that, telling them how many impacted days. Projecting out how many more people would come with the ADA doc, all that kind of stuff, um. So in the future, it's something to look forward to for a lot of our projects um, across the town, getting better data, but um, that was their, that was their proposal, so it's. It's totally conditional, nothing set in stone, but um, hopefully we'll know by next week if we can get the the grant doc, the doc.
I kind of think though, even if we end up with one to start, those little um. Tube strips with the little, it's a little device goes on it and it registers when air gets pushed out.
Yep.
It just attract when people cross over, we could probably do that with one.
Yep.
And then explain ourselves why we need a second one, just on traffic.
Yep.
So I think even getting one, which was what we shot for in the first place, was one.
Really was, I mean, we just took a swing with the grant for two.
But one would be a start and then get raw data about how much usage it gets. You know, the passage over those lines and then we go back again.
You know, we talked about, you know, the QR code too, um, at the dock or at the pavilion, just saying, what would you like to see here? Uh, how often are you using this? Have you used it more since we put the dock in? Do you think fishing is better since we put the dock in? All those things and that, that's data, right? Even if we have twenty people. That end up doing it throughout the summer, say, all twenty people use the dock. How many more did that didn't do the QR code? Because, you know, kids without phones that are just cruising out there, how many people are in your family? Eight, y'all use the dock, that's huge. So, we're still, still in the cross our fingers phase, uh, one thing that was discussed, which um. You know, totally still conditionally, but. If this goes through, um. That, that's money that was put for a CIP project that is being taken by vast majority of grant funding, so. Um, looking at going back, potentially going back to the board at that meeting, we should know. That would be something that we could present and say, look what we're trying to do, so, my thought is, put a dock in. Take this golf course out, do the disc golf course, put a dog park in, so we've done that domino thing where one amenity, two amenities, three amenities. All within the piece of one grant and one CIP bundle, which thought we were just gonna get a dock. That would be, you know, if if we could, that just. We gotta wish, right? We gotta dream, that's why, that's why we have all this, so, still a lot of work to be done with that. Um, still some ideas about the dog park and whether or not it is gonna be good to go with the new floodplain stuff. Working on that stuff, um, Bob brought that up today and I'll backtrack again, but we're still working through that, but. Big picture, that'd be, that's what we would take the swing out, in my opinion, just, I mean, obviously it's to this board, but that just popped in my mind like, wow. How can, how can we, if if we're allowed to, gotta present that, but.
But I guess I, since you're talking about the airstrip in summer is. Really close, is there any way we could get something I bet implemented to in different areas? Cause it sounds like if we're competing against people for grants, we're gonna need some more solid, maybe that's why we haven't gotten the GOCO grant. More solid up compared to other people.
Which some of the GOCO is the. Um, letters from community members, which we've gotten in the past, but we still have gotten passed up, so it's not a bad idea to have. Like raw data to say, like, you know. This part of the park or this skate park or or this and that, that, you know, this is what kind of usage we're seeing.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if that's something that, I don't know the cost, obviously, but if it's something that the town could purchase. And then move multiple loca- locations and get that data, that way when you're doing these grant requests, we have that. Cause you're right, that's probably a big key part of. Hey, we know, we know kids are coming here, we know families are using this area, you know? Is why we're asking for more money, this is, this is how much people, how many people you're gonna affect, you know, granting less the money instead of somebody else.
Yeah, the the one thing, that is a fantastic idea, I'd love to have that, I'm sure. Every time we push out a grant or just an idea for how the town moves, we need more raw data. You know, these docks, it's a little hard to compete when you have everybody coming in on one road to go to. A reservoir and they just, how many residents, you know, how many people came in, there were four people in that truck, be maybe, well, we have people all over the place. But any data we get is better than just the eyeballs from. We have, but, I I just feel, you know, at least the dock alone. Um, grant or no grant, it's a fantastic proposal for our community and. You know, from, from one to many, no matter what, we're gonna do something awesome, right?
I'm just sure that they are so thorough, I guess, you know, like, they have like. Serious, serious data to give out, that's. Yeah, it's pretty cool. Places, you know, like our towns are all, all these towns that just aren't, can't compete with. You know, the bigger cities that do that.
Yeah.
Get them the same fighting, you know, you know?
Localized impact versus a regional impact too, right? I mean, hopefully this will bring people that are close in Fort Collins up, you know? Increase our fishing derby, there are some at like reservoirs, I saw some of the proposals from last year that um, were sent. And it's like, across uh, an inlet and it's like a, a suspended ADA, it's got like. Pods for you to go sit in for hours and just like fish from, and we're, we're talking about, who knows, but two hundred thousand dollars worth of. Work, but that impacts everybody that's going to whatever massive reservoir, it was like down in Arbat or somewhere like. You know, you can understand, but they're hopefully on board with like, putting us on the map. Cause there will be a little fishing spot on the, on the website.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, we crushed it.
Uh, we want to move on, talk about um, Gus Macklin.
I had a good conversation with Gus this last week, his name's Scott McNeil, this, he's the owner. And they're interested in coming. It's, it's very heavy volunteer. So they bring out about eight staff to run it. So that they're bringing everything from registration, um, uh, tournament director, soundstage. Did I say registration already? Brackets. So, they bring out about eight people with them. He's thinking that he could come out here for a visit in September, uh, that's when, that's when his schedule dies down from doing tournaments this summer. He said, it works well, especially, you know, I kind of explained where the town of Wellington is and. In proximity to CSU. And he said, spring and fall definitely would be, spring or fall would be definitely the best times to do it. Just so we can pull the teams. Um, for a tournament to make money, we're gonna need between two hundred fifty and three hundred teams. So, which I I think is doable, um, we can play with the, the, the cost of entry. Um, they give a range from, I think it's one fifty a team to two hundred a team. Um, and most likely we could probably be in that one eighty range and be pretty okay, their teams are four. But, he brought up a statistic yesterday, I thought was super interesting that, he said that it's the, the. Like sixty plus percent of participants in the Gus Mackard tournaments are below the age of twelve. So, I mean, it's a really kids oriented event. And it's, he sells it as it's a festival, you know, it's, it's a bring people together and. Yes, there's a sport going on, but there's more going on, uh, the soundstage with the top men's court and the, they do what's called a dream court. Where, you know, they'll bring in a team of eight-year-olds, you know, they'll bring that, that court over to the dream court. And play on sport court and have better, they do a, they do a dunk tournament at uh. On the top men's court and they also lower hoops and do a, a kids dunk event. And so they run everything, it's a super professional organization, um, his concerns were. The closest tournament he has to us is probably Hops New Mexico right now. So, he says, one, we're gonna be kind of in the outskirts, so do the, do the hoops come from the Midwest or they come from Hops? It's about ten hours away to. It's about ten hours away to, I mean, by car to Hobbs. So most likely our hoops would come from there in the support court and everything else. Um once we establish a tournament here, everybody's gonna want one. I mean, that that's the surrounding communities are gonna want, and we'll be the we'll be the granddaddy here of starting a tournament, so. Super interesting, um something that he does with, we're both Central Michigan grads, Gus and I. Um although if he was watching the meeting, he graduated way before me, um but uh. He does a, he he's a recreation major just like me, and now there's a recreation class. Through Central Michigan University that the kids get, they they get credit, they're they're credit hours. Where they plan, help recruit and help run the tournament. And I didn't know with our proximity, if you know, this is for the the Wellington Parks and Recreation to start with. But to bring in somebody like that, like to possibly start something at CSU. I don't know if we could, I mean, I think that's years down the road to get curriculum and everything else, but. Get the recreation department to get involved in a project like this. And then they can help with volunteers and uh. One of the biggest differences in some of the things that you'll hear about three and three tournaments across the country is they got really rough. Okay, so I mean, it's a, I I played in one in Belding, Michigan. And I was actually playing basketball at the time and I had three other players that I was the worst on the team by far, so we we were pretty good. And we got beat by some Grand Ledge kids that were just football players and they just knocked us around, well, they. Uh now every term has registered officials, so that's something that we would have to.
Is that part of the staff or no?
No, they're only bringing eight, so I mean, the the big things are, can we shut down the street? We gotta get officials, we gotta get volunteers to to help with registration brackets, but they bring a lead with all that.
Okay.
What is the time that the event runs, like how many hours is it?
Uh generally, a a three hundred team tournament, you wouldn't have to go on Friday, you could go Saturday, Sunday.
Saturday, Sunday, and then like it's all day?
Yeah, it's pretty, you know, it's pretty much eight uh. Eight to probably six on Saturday and then it runs to probably four on Sunday and then they pack up and they're in the truck. They pack the hoops up and send them down the road and they're out of here.
Yeah, I'm intrigued, um I think for the way that things move in this town, it's definitely a little far off, but like. You know, in my opinion, having come out in September and just getting that brainstorm, seeing. How long it would take to get the registrations up to what it would be, you know, whether this is a. A next year thing or a two year plan for us and and getting that um. Before, as you know, these these things don't just pop up, right? The work we need to do, right? I think, you know, some some of the consideration would be. How and when um the potential downtown Cleveland project goes, you know. Um you know, if that's ongoing, then doing anything large in this town is gonna be rough, maybe do it right after that and showcase that. You know, the businesses are gonna be ready, so but starting it now. And having the idea is important, if if we're gonna try to put it on in a year and a half or two years or whatever, three, I'm not saying what it is, but wherever it is.
And and my goal would be that this is a, I mean. Your second, third, fourth, fifth year of doing it. That's when you start getting maturity, so people hearing about it, depending on when it is, like he he said, if you go in the fall after. The main season's done. It would be, you you'd get people from all over the country flying into the tournament, I mean, that's, you'd get the the Gus Macker hardcore people. Um if year one, we do it in the summertime, it's gonna get, we'll probably have a hundred and fifty teams. Year two, two hundred, year three, you know, two, so it should grow from there, but I mean, my goal would be to break even year one. And then, you know. This has been a great fundraiser for communities and I mean, that's how Gus Mackers lasted so so long since nineteen seventy four. Um that's how it's lasted so long is they they invest in the community and they. Um raise money for good local organizations.
Love opportunity.
Yeah, definitely, three, I mean, sounds good.
So we'll talk about September, I'll talk about whenever I'll find out our date in September and see if we can come to this meeting. Okay, that'd be good. You'd love that, he Gus is about sixty five years old, he's not this tall. And just been a basketball player his whole life and he 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 was a gym teacher and quit that. Macker one hundred percent since he is probably like twenty two.
That's cool.
So, pretty neat organizations.
Alright.
Alright, master plan and comprehensive.
Um, you know, we talked a lot about alignment, long-term vision, um we've talked a lot about. Our master plan update from the twenty fifteen one and how that's really gonna drive not just these amenity projects, but where we move. In the future, that's pretty much gotta be a goal and how we can continue to tie alignment. So I just put on, it's it's in the packet, um both the the parks two thousand fifteen and then the comprehensive town twenty twenty one. Um. Don't love saying you guys get homework, but we all have homework, I think we need to look through that and. See where especially the parks one can be updated and then where we can align with the comprehensive plan and then. When the new strategic plan comes out with the new board, where all that ties in and how and what we see fit for when we put the. Hopefully, we we push the master plan, um what we add into the RFP, RFQ um. But we're looking back at what what has worked, what needs to be updated, why we're updating that. And then moving forward with all the other alignments, um so yeah, I would, I would like everybody to, you know. Before the next meeting to look through that and then any questions you have, especially on the comprehensive plan. Um would love for you to write it down somewhere, send it to me. Um be ready, cause we're trying, I think Cody's definitely on board to come to the next meeting. So that's where we'll get our questions on how pros aligns, how the parks master plan will align. Um you know, where where we left off with trails, all that kind of stuff that's in there. What we wanna update that we can talk to him about, um and just have a good conversation, um he and I talked uh briefly. Yesterday and then a couple of weeks ago and just like, we want a well-rounded conversation, so it's not just like, hey. I'm Cody for the people that don't know me, what are my, what are the questions you have, like? Let's let's put some effort into this so that when he comes out, we can look to that as a strong way to bounce into or forward with our. Um request for that master plan.
Well, I guess the only thing that I really would have for Cody that if you wanted to give him the heads up is that we're aware of the. Um Sundance and Saddleback or Saddleback and vice versa, Saddleback and Sundance. But if we could get any kind of information, if there's any other annexations or any other developments that are coming. Um that he might know of, it'd be interesting to see locations where. Kind of with our master plan, everything where we can maybe start thinking forward about. Amenities that we might wanna put in these parks, um and hopefully actually get a park out of some of these ways. Um but it'd be a good idea if we knew locations that east side, west side, you know, north, south. Um so we know what we're dealing with, so you could come with some of that would be great.
Um I'll just start an email and we can just keep that separate email post and it'll just be. Discussion um with planner.
Great.
And then I made that reply with questions. And then the best thing too, I can say, hey, this is where this conversation is gonna go, I can show Cody prior to and he can bring whatever material, I can add it to the packet. So that we're all prepared and then he knows like, you know, sometimes those discussions can end up. Thirty minutes and sometimes they could end up two hours, right? Like if if we get in, if we get into depth. So that's why I want everybody to do some homework beforehand, like so if you have questions about the comprehensive plan, bring those up and maybe we can answer that beforehand, so we gain. Understanding for where the conversation goes.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's like uh the combined are like two hundred and twenty pages, so don't don't feel like you have to. Snorts those, but you know, that that gives time and if if, hey, if we continue and we're like, hey, we need to have a further discussion internally, we can. I don't wanna keep pushing Cody off and he even said that today, he's like, yeah, I can come next month, I don't wanna keep kicking our conversation. Down the road, right? He wants to come in, but we we all want it to be productive, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Future calendar?
Future calendar. Let me bring it up. So, right now. We have um Cody, um keeping the update on there, I'll change this to priority list.
We could. You think it's too soon? Try to pile too much on at once.
What if we had Cody, just a what if we had Cody come to the June meeting instead, that way for our May meeting, we have time to really. Make sure we're getting our presentation ready for the trustee meetings. A little nervous, I want it to be really polished, hoping everybody can make it, you know, like um. That's why I have a lot.
Yeah, and we can always have a. Like a work session or something if we need to.
Yeah.
Um especially if we talk about everything that needs to happen during the presentation and then it takes somebody to get it all put together and then we have a. Work session to kind of go over it right before the meeting, would be okay with me.
That's okay. It is, but I felt like it took a lot, a chunk of our meeting and then we also had like the the practice run.
Well, cause we have to go over what we did accomplish, what we're trying to accomplish and then. Within the year, within the capital improvement stuff, so it's not a bad idea, yeah. It's not just a refresher.
Right. Ooh. Can't type today. Okay, um so, um. We can, we email about it if we want a a date, it's a little hard to set now since we're missing a couple of people, um. The date for the the May one, but you know, as that. Meeting comes closer on the eighth, maybe we can try to get a date and then either finalize it at that May eighth meeting or have it finalized before, so we don't. You know, whatever that comes to, but um and then we'll, you know, that gives us the time to put the presentation together, refine it here.
Maybe good.
Yeah. It it's worked out at the last few, right? The ones that we came in and did a couple of, you know, we're here for an hour, hour and ten minutes, just looking it over. That's singular focus thing, so we can actually dial it in.
Yeah. I expect, and we're also gonna have more information by the May meeting, hopefully about the um. Veterans Plaza, the fishing grant, I make, I feel like there's gonna be some some. Run plenty.
Yeah, and and if the fishing grant goes through through, ask about reallocating the.
Yeah.
Capital money, I mean, that'll be, that'll be huge.
I'm excited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can play this.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna move on to now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um. We're doing the large project over at the redo over at Park Meadows, uh that's going really well, those of you that saw it um. Last week, I encourage everybody to go look at it, it's even more complete, they've been working on it this week, we're trying to get it finished by the end of the day. Tomorrow, a meeting with the arborist to replant the trees over there, get a schedule for it early next week, so um that's good. I finally got the third quote for the solar lights in, so I don't know if those will, those probably won't go in before the event. Um just because it takes a little time to get those solar lights here and then put in, but um finally got the three quotes. Uh we'll pick one of those, I don't know if you guys wanna be involved in that process, it was a CIP, it's just, I will probably. Most likely go with, um they're all very similar, the company that the town has used before, um Public Works has. But that's just another CIP swing, um we lost all of the infield material everywhere from. From the wind, so we've been working on sweeping it back in with the skin steer I did the other day and just moving it from piles. Um but. That wind was brutal, it was bad, we didn't lose a ton, I mean, we didn't have too bad a damage to to many trees. Um in the parks department, lots of little branches, I mean decent sized ones too, but nothing too crazy. Um not any damage to any of the buildings, there was some stuff in town, but. Our stuff came unscathed, um. Starting mowing, starting painting, sports are going on, um. Tomorrow, as far as recreation goes, or Friday, we're gonna participate in the um PSD. Oh, I can't do the exact name, it's like a, a fun night over at um. The carnival, thank you, yeah, we're we're there, so I have a kiddos come, we'll have a, yeah, a pop up, um. Friday evening, five o'clock to seven, I believe. Yep, um it'd be kind of similar to what was presented over at uh Night Beyond Limits, we won't be as extensive. Moved out, but there'll be other stuff to do, so come visit us there, Ross has got stuff from the library, that'll be fun.
It starts, it's from five to eight.
Five to eight. So, yeah, we're doing that for recreation.
What about the parking apps? Are you guys making any progress? We doubt we still call to present.
Oh, yes, um the next step is just getting pictures and I sat down with both Kelly and Jerry. And we're gonna just do it all internally.
Cool.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, he he's done stuff like this, Jerry has, he's he's got his um. Guys, arms wrapped around it, so we just need to get all the information, get it down and. Get it designed, get some new pictures, cause we want pictures of our parks.
Yeah, but why don't we ask the community to send some in?
Um they could, they could if they wanted to.
If you're having fun in one of our parks, send us a picture that we potentially use for, or we still could, you know, cause we have their information, we can get those, the media releases. But it'd be well, people.
It would be, um. He, we do have a professional town camera, which is pretty solid. Oh, I mean, it might be kind of tough for the cell phone ones, but I do love that idea, like we should put a post out that says. Send us your photos, like, you know, the Rockies have that, if you're at a Rockies game, they're like, send us a photo, we'll put you on the big screen, like. Send us a photo, fill out the form and our next social media post might have your kid on it, that's a cool idea.
It'd be fun to get the community involved.
Or even if we just mentioned that the truckers are gonna be at a certain park at a certain point.
Yeah.
And you know, bring kids, like maybe you'll be part of the.
We did that to websites ago, we um said, come, be out and about and people just signed waivers and and we had. Everybody's family and friends.
Yeah, cool thing about the camera though is if they're not there, like we're gonna take pictures of our volun- well, volunteer coaches. And they're always have the kids, right? Cause they're coaching, but it 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 can do a. Like a blurred background, so you can still see the action in the kids, but not in the faces, so it's, that's pretty cool too, I love the ideas. That'd be fun.
I'm just excited to get it done, like getting it done for the summer, presenting it to the trustees, like, hey, we're getting the word out here, all the cool stuff we got.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, busy, but there's that time of the season, right? Think we're gonna mow tomorrow, we're gonna have to mow for the first time. Out here. Applications open online.
I don't want you to pay, then he'll expect stuff.
Not able to make it tonight for her um report, but I.
She she was on listening for a little bit, but she's she's off now, yeah, so.
Um for pros board members, I just had, um we haven't talked about it, so we used to do an annual like. Summary or review or whatever, the end of the year, like here's all the things that we did. The end of the year, like, here's all the things that we did. Um, and I have some of the years, so I was gonna get that compiled. And I think it would just be really useful when we can get them printed for all of the board members and then moving forward, like, maybe we could do one for last year. And then, um, write that up and then going forward, we would just have it that we can, it would live in everybody's binders. So when we have new board members, they can literally look through the last ten years ago, this year they did that, right?
I love that, yeah.
It's kind of nice.
Idea.
Yeah, so I I think from all the time I've been here, there's been some pretty meaningful things that have happened. And the things that we fought for and it actually could turn into part of our presentation at some point.
Yeah.
Of like, you know, these are the year, this this year, we did this, we did, so I'm looking forward to next year, we want, you know. X, Y, and Z, and we just wanna stay in line with what we've been doing throughout the years, I think that's really important, it's a really good idea.
We we could also get the old presentations that we've made to the board and get those slides just printed off. And then you'd have like, this is what we accomplished page, these are the presentations we did. That you guys did to the board all in like a the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, this is everything.
Yeah, I think it'd be important, when people come in, they're like, have all the information, they're ready to go. Okay.
Good.
Cool.
Yeah. Do we wanna do another, um, uh, park tour this coming next month, um? I'm I'm game for it and.
I loved it.
Yeah.
I learned, I learned so much in that hour, hour and a half, I mean.
Well, like I said, I've been to Wellville and I I forget every time that there's so many great places to do things there. Yep. And then we went to the meadows, Park Meadows, and it's like, okay, I can see all the work that's being done. And the difference between what I knew before and what's happening now, and then we got a chance to look at harvest, so it's like, I'm 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 game, let's do it again.
So I think probably the next set would be the one that's gonna include, um, the west side of ball, right, to kind of walk that space.
We could, we could probably do Winnick at the same time and then just keep to those two.
Yeah.
Cause the disc golf is gonna be kind of extensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we walk it.
If we walk it.
If we walk it.
We had a great time on bikes.
Well, I'll try to have my bike this time, last time I was a little bit late, so I didn't have my bike yet, and I live right there, so. I'll bring my bike.
I was just lazy. No skateboard? Do you have a longboard? I do have a longboard. Come on. I love my bike, it just was super lazy.
Honestly, I love it.
So do you wanna do that then? Put it on? Where do you wanna meet? Retire, um, first week again?
I think we should probably just meet at the Knowles Linear Roundabout by Rice.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
And then Circular Drive.
Good, yeah.
When, when?
It'll be the first Wednesday of. May.
Okay. Wednesdays are good, I can do that, I've got so much kids stuff.
So we'll go the first.
What, Wednesday, May first?
You have a, you have a kid in six. Sports right now, Monday, Wednesday, so. Well, does that work for you?
Um, yeah, that's fine, that if it if it falls on that week right now. Well, it's that few point, we can, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. Day first, six P M, at the Knowles. Perfect. Yeah, I enjoyed that.
Well, especially if we're talking about the movement, getting that set up, I still can't picture. Um, everything over the episode, great.
Yeah.
And Winnick's just fun.
Yeah. I'll bring you some frisbees. I got a bunch.
What else?
Uh, I got a trailer, I didn't want to emphasize who knows that, so, um, so yeah, we're, I don't know, we gotta do, um. I guess I will submit the application for, there's gotta be some kind of application or something.
Yes, yes.
So, um, I can do that, I'll take care of that and then. Anybody has any, what we wanna do with our film, we'll put it out.
We might have to look. I mean, it needs, uh, banners, assuming. Parks Direct might have some stuff.
Do you have any giveaways? Okay. I'll walk it, I I don't have to be on the trailer, I'll walk it handily, I love doing the parades anyways.
Can we do frisbees? I mean, do we have a budget to do any, like?
Yeah, we we have a, we have a good amount of stuff that we get, um, and outside the park and plays or.
Those little bidget spinners were awesome.
There's stuff.
My kids, I think still have those.
My kids like the color changing cup.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good, yeah.
Yeah.
We had some different stuff this year.
How long's the trailer?
Good.
Twenty-four foot.
Okay.
It's a good sized trailer.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, Chrome Dome is loaning it to us, so. Should probably put it, I don't even know if he's got, or I'll get a sign from him, so at least he's gonna get a little bit of a say in that. You know, advertising people, you drive down the street and then. I don't know how elaborate we wanna do or what we wanna do, so. Any ideas, you know, we can.
I love the idea, it was my idea, so I really.
Pick a wall, do skateboarding. We can get the ramps, I got some.
Going down the road skateboarding, are you kidding me?
Oh, my God.
Is there, is there a?
Well, I'm not very imaginative when it comes to design, but if you need help with anything, let me know, I can, I'm handy, so.
Okay, just do some Googling.
Yeah.
We can help ahead of time.
Throw some stuff, yeah, we'd definitely be best to kind of get things kind of going a little bit.
I might have some. For another special meeting up there for the late June. Or low, I can, you want me to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just put.
That'll be a question mark. We'll be able to grill a while either.
Probably, yeah.
So it's gonna take a bit before you can get.
Have you seen the trailer? I haven't, I haven't been over there.
Okay, it.
Do you wanna take a?
Well, is it a gooseneck or is it just a bumper pole or?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I can, I can stop over there and get some pictures.
Yeah, if you just, if you shot a picture, then I'll see if I can. I mean, I've got a fifth wheel hitch and I've got. Anything ball wise, except for an inch and seven eights and all of that.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, I know, I mean, it's probably a good sized decent trailer for.
Yeah, it's kinda.
He does metal working halls, so all over the place, so. He shows pretty stuff. It'd be fun. Or it's one of his old ones, I don't get. He's an awesome guy, wouldn't think it.
Yeah, twenty-four feet, it's a big trailer.
Very concerned, I mean, I got, I got rammed somebody garage that would get put on the back of it, um, I don't have a full on half pipe I can put on it, but. I'll take a look at it, I'll I'll go over it and take a look at it. I mean, I like the pickleball idea.
Yeah, that'd be easy, it's just a temporary, not, I mean, just.
Yeah. Use around. Jump off.
Yes.
Well, I can handle it, had it out for that too, cause we do that anyway, so. I don't mind going to buy a whole bunch of candy.
One thing that came up too, um, when I was talking to town staff, it's that if you guys want. We can, someone's graphically designed, you can design a shirt and. Um, since you're a volunteer board, we can get you guys prost shirts, if you ever come to events and volunteer.
Yeah.
To promote, to promote prost as well as, you know, show up and volunteer, probably say volunteer on the back, but you can. Like, someone wants to come up with the prost logo, we have a mission and vision, now we need a logo. And then it can, it can come out of my budget since. Parks, right?
We have a magnetic name dodges that, um, we could wear to different events.
Oh, yeah, we have those, next time we do. Shoot all all of our current staff, well, actually, I take that back, I'll get you all. Um, the badges, cause when we get, um, recreational seasonal staff, we have to get them badges so that they're official at our events.
It'd be great, it's really helpful and then you can just pop them on at different things and then that way we're ready and able to ta- uh, talk to the community with their questions. Or suggestions.
Who's gonna design the logo?
Not up my alley.
I recruit all my kids, I've got pretty creative kids, though, they're just over there probably listening, so.
Love it, okay.
Nice, I did, sorry, one more update, I completely forgot to update this, um, Kristen Hamel, who was here last time and presented on behalf of Main Streets. Um, got. I guess you'd say promoted, but she she got, um, the position that was left by Holly Gayham. Um, Holly, um, put in her letter of resignation while she was on, um, leave, went to relieve, so she decided to continue motherhood and. Um, we had two internal applicants from the recreation crew for assistant recreation coordinator and Kristen got that job. So she will be, um, she and Emma are now the assistant recreation coordinators.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned, seven twenty-five.